...at February 12, 2010. Please stand as you're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gents.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America.
... any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, on the -- it's like Sandy with some staff and community recognition and staff and student and community recognition.
And this evening we're doing community recognition. So I'm going to ask Mike Lindowski to come up by the mic and Amy Hamburg, principal at EP Rock, to join his side there. Mike was recently, in September, honored by 3M. He's a 3M employee and he was honored as one of 25 across the nation to receive the 3M Community Volunteer Award. And this award is given to dedicated 3M employees and retirees who are devoted to improving and enriching their local communities. And now, Mike, for over 10 years has served on the 3M TWIST, which stands for Teachers Working in Science and Technology. He works for that committee and for the last three years he's chaired that committee. And TWIST is a summer internship program for math and science teachers, offering them research experiences with new ideas and applications they bring to life in their classrooms. And we're working together to make sure that we have Hudson teachers involved. Mike is also a 3M visiting wizard, which he does in our schools, if you know about the 3M wizard program, and performs frequent science experiments in classrooms and with community groups. Twenty teachers, hosts, committee members, and colleagues wrote letters of support for Mike's award nomination with frequent comments on his enthusiasm, professionalism, leadership, sincerity, infectious energy, and wit. And Amy and I met with Mike because he, as part of this award, received $1,000 and he has generously donated that $1,000 to EP Rock Elementary. And no surprise that what he's going to do with that money, Amy and I are busy picking out 3M science equipment and supplies, so it'll be put to good use. So, I don't -- Mike, if you want to say a few words as well? He is a parent of a student at EP Rock.
Thank you. Really, I've been involved with EP Rock for the last few years since the redistricting process. I was one of those disgruntled parents who got moved from, honestly, we could almost see Hudson Prairie from our house to EP Rock and I was real upset until I had a chance to meet Mrs. Hamburg during that process. And I came away from those initial meetings very impressed with Mrs. Hamburg and achieved an open mind about the transition to EP Rock. And since that time, I've been very pleased with that. In fact, I really think that that was the best move for us. I'm not confident that's necessarily what was intended, you know, the redistricting to benefit me. But it worked out that way, so I'm pretty pleased with that. As what Sandy mentioned, as part of this award, all the awardees are -- we're not actually given $1,000. We get to choose where the $1,000 goes. And it's really because I've been so impressed with Mrs. Hamburg and the staff at EP Rock and with my interest in science education and a desire to do something to encourage that and facilitate it, I thought this would be a great way to use that for some equipment supplies, which quite honestly, you don't find in elementary school classrooms, computer-based laboratory equipment, so that students can go beyond the dropping water on pieces of paper and seeing how wet it gets. You know, to actually measuring things like pH or concentrations or magnetic field strength in mila tesla or some of those things. And to allow students to have the opportunity to use technology in a hands-on way to further increase their interest in science and technology and become the leaders for tomorrow, to lead us to solve -- because I believe that science and technology are going to help solve the problems that are facing us right now with energy and some of these other things. And so I'm really very pleased to be able to direct this gift to EP Rock and I'm very happy that Mrs. Hamburg and Mrs. Kovach were receptive of that. And I would hope that the Board of Education would continue to reinforce these sorts of things and support whatever requests that might come for teacher development in order to fully utilize this kit as well as other opportunities that might come from the public and community. So, thank you.
Mike, thank you for your dedication to the STEM education in our elementary schools here in Hudson. It's a great gift, really. Okay, we are on to -- we are on to the superintendent's report. Mary?
Well, good evening to everyone. I do want to first report on Hudson School District presentations. We are consistently being recognized and selected to present regionally and at the state level the practices in the Hudson School District. This certainly is an honor and, again, recognition of the level of our practices. And, you know, you might question, well, what does the Hudson School District get out of having staff members present at a conference? There's quite a bit of benefit to the district. Through the preparation process, our staff reflect on their practice, they identify the key components, the results of their work, and they become even more intentional in their delivery of those practices and making sure that we continue the most important elements of that back at home. So it has high benefit to the value even beyond just recognition throughout the state. This last few weeks, at the end of September into October, at the Wisconsin ASCD Conference, a state-level conference held annually, we had two presentations. The first one was Creating a System for Literacy Learning: Common Planning Time, and that was presented by Peg Schumaker and two of our elementary principals, Dave Grambo and Dolph Schmidt. And then also, another presentation was Transform a School Community with Response to Intervention, and that was presented by Ann Mitchell and Suzie Prather, both elementary principals. Amy Hamburg was going to join them but was called back home, so she returned home instead. But her time's coming, as I understand. I was able to attend both of those presentations and also heard many, many outstanding comments about our administrative team and how impressed they were by the attendees at the conference, but also, they were very impressed by the actions and the collective action of our elementary administrators. So we heard many, many outstanding comments by state leaders about their leadership back in Hudson and their example in the state. So you would be really proud and I wish you could have been there to hear those as well. At the CISA-11 STEM Summit, this is a regional conference coming up October 14 next week, or actually, this week, yes, this week, Dan Wieland will be a co-presenter on Project Lead the Way, the model itself. So again, talking about our practices and a fairly new initiative that our students have benefited from. Robin Spencer Beck is presenting again at the Annual Mental Health and Substance Abuse Training Conference, and she's presenting a sectional on educating youth about their strengths and challenges. And then coming up this January, at the State Education Conference Convention, also called the School Board Convention in January of 2011, we have two presentations that have been selected. One is Creating Collaboration Structures at the Elementary Level, and Peg Schumaker and I believe Amy Hamburg is going to be part of that presentation. And then we have another one, Inclusive Senior Administrator Selective Process. Tracy Habashalina and I will be presenting that one. And, you know, when we are selected particularly to present two different sectionals at a conference, that is really speaks highly of how we are looked at at the state level. It's fairly unusual because the organizers who are selecting presentations really like to select multiple presenters from various parts of the state. And we have, as you heard tonight, at the Wisconsin ASCD Conference, we had two sectionals. We will have two at the upcoming School Board Convention, and we had two last year at the School Board Convention. So again, the Hudson School District is being highly recognized throughout the state for our leadership and the practices, the best practices that are being implemented here. And we all should be proud of that. Should I just move right along? Okay, so, turning in your information to page three and our enrollment. And even during a time of recession, the Hudson School District enrollment continues to grow. I'm going to talk specifically about the district resident enrollment and the early childhood through grade 12 enrollment, comparing our third Friday count in September from last year, 2009, to our recent count, 2010. You can see on the chart, I believe it's being shown up here, the capacity of each of our buildings. And I do want to just talk about a couple of them, the ones that are noted with asterisks so that you understand why they are noted. Holden has a capacity of 294, and when we determined capacities, they were based on our class-size guidelines. We noted when we identified Holden for 294 students that the common areas, the cafeteria, the media center, and the areas for math and reading instruction and so forth, were not comparable or equitable to our other buildings. And so if we were really going to expand that building to a capacity of 294, we would need to address those areas to support that capacity. Hudson Prairie has had a capacity of 588, but we all know that with the growth of the middle school, the middle school is using three classrooms throughout the day, and so we could not count on Hudson Prairie's capacity being at 588 until those three classrooms are restored to the elementary population. With that in mind, looking at the elementary change from, again, 2009 to 2010, we had a growth at three elementary schools with particular growth, significant growth, at EP Rock and at Holden, which is a change from our previous time periods. The other elementary schools, a little up and a little down, are really close to the same numbers as they've had in the past. So if we look at the total elementary capacity compared to the number of students that we have, it looks like we have a bit of room, but it's limited room. Remember, our capacity is based on filling every seat in every classroom and making sure those students are equally distributed. And we know that's not how students come to school in those kind of numbers. So when we look at that and we look at each school individually, there really isn't a lot of capacity. In fact, we started capping classes again at when they reach beyond our class-size guideline, and the first class to be capped is the kindergarten class at Holden. And so we, any new students that are coming into that class will be transported to another school, and right now, that's at Willow River. Moving on to the middle school, you can see that the middle school is, again, growing as well. There's been 31 additional students over the past year, and it's 116 students over capacity. That is a full house of additional students and certainly of great concern as we look to the future and consider how we're going to educate those students in the largest middle school in the state and continuing to grow. At the high school, the high school started to grow at this point. It really was stable in the past few years, and so it is very close nearing full capacity even at the high school because of the program at the high school. Oftentimes, you think of capacity a little under the number of seats that you have, and so we could say at this point, it's really essentially full right now. Looking at the increases, the percent of increase at the elementary is almost a little under 2%. Middle school is 2.5%, so it has the largest growth. This year, the high school is, has a 1% growth, and the total district growth is at 2%. I'm looking at my notes here to see if I missed anything.
Can I clarify something, Mary? Can I clarify?
Oh, you want to add something, Nancy?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I do.
Before I go on to the next page?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The kindergarten enrollment is the highest ever, and just before school began, we did add two sections of kindergarten, one at North Hudson and one at Willow. And ready to receive any of the over-enrolled kindergarten programs at any of our sites. And the Holden program, new students moving in would go to North Hudson.
So I'd like to turn your attention to page four at this point, and Nancy's pointed out the kindergarten class, and we're going to look at the numbers on this page in relationship to our capacity for the future and also Dr. Hazel Reinhardt's projections that I know Lynn Robson has asked a number of times about our numbers in comparison to that. So if we just look at the totals at the bottom of the page for each of the grade levels, that's what I'm going to reference. Nancy pointed out that our kindergarten class, if you look at all of our grade levels through 12, is our largest class. It's our largest elementary class that we've ever experienced. And if you look at sixth grade, 451 students, it's the largest of all of our 6th through 12 classes. That's very concerning for us and challenging as we think of space for the future. So if we looked at that kindergarten class, and certainly one thing we don't know, is this an anomaly? Is it a class that's just going to be large as it moves through, or is this a predictor of what's going to come in the future? And we're going to have classes much larger than we've experienced in the past. And so just thinking about that and taking that 459 students in kindergarten, we have growth through most of our grade levels over time historically. But our biggest growth happens to be from fifth grade to sixth grade, moving into the middle school, and from eighth grade to ninth grade, moving into the high school. In fact, from last year to this year, January, September to September, we had 22 additional students, actually, in both levels. We would take that kindergarten class and just to make it easy, we won't look at any of the other grade levels and additions to that enrollment, and just look at adding 22 students in from fifth to sixth and 22 students from eighth to ninth. And then look at that class at graduation. What size would that class be? And this is limited growth. That class would be 503 students. And so we would historically find that the 503 would be the minimum number and that we would expect that number to be higher. And if we had a high school with over 500 students for each of the four years, that would be a high school of 2,000 students, 320 students over capacity. And if we just added 22 students from that kindergarten class going into the middle school and then looked at three years of that, of about 480 students, the middle school would be at 1,443 students, and that would be over 300 students in capacity as well. So certainly, when we look at these numbers, we have great concerns about the amount of space and continuing the educational excellence that we have in the Hudson School District because the space for learning is definitely at a premium. Just to give you a reference, as I said, that kindergarten class was, could be, over 500 students. Our graduating class in 2010 was 417 students, so it was the largest class that's graduated from Hudson High School, and yet we're looking at much larger classes in the future. Comparing the numbers to Dr. Hazel Reinhardt's March 2008 projections, we have to keep in mind that her projections were prior to the recession because certainly the recession has slowed our growth, but it hasn't eliminated it. And so if I look at it in relationship to that, the kindergarten through fifth grade enrollment, we are 77 students short of her low projection. At the middle school, grade six through eight, we would be 40 students below her projection. And at the high school, we would be 12 students below our projection. Now, 12 students below is really right on target. And if you think of projections over time, we're talking about 129 students below her projections, K through 12, that's 1.7% difference, and it's not a big difference, even though that was a low projection and we have experienced a very, the most significant recession that we've ever experienced, and yet our growth is just below her projections. So I think we should consider that as we think about space. We have asked the Facilities and Grounds Committee, I know Ms. Robson will report about this later, to update these projections so that we have new numbers to work with based on our new historical information. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Madam President? Mary, one of the things that you talked about was, I think, the kindergarten enrollment or, excuse me, the enrollment over all of the elementary showing a 1.94% increase, but if you look at the change from, let's say, that second grade class to the first grade class, that's, I think, 7.1%. And then from that first grade class to the incoming kindergarten, that's 8.7%. That's more staggering to me. That's a very scary trend.
Good point, good point. And that's why we want the projections to be updated at this point. Certainly, in our planning for facilities for the future and space for learning, we need to have the most updated information possible.
Okay. Are there other questions for Mary on the numbers? No? Okay. Next topic, Mary.
All right. Thank you, a big thank you to the Knights of Columbus who have historically, for many years, given us a generous, genuine contribution to be used on behalf of our students with cognitive disabilities. This year, they have contributed a little under $1,000 to our programs, and certainly we thank them for that. It's wonderful that they're supporting our students and helping them learn through these dollars. So we just thank the Knights of Columbus for their continuing contributions to our educational program.
That's great news. All right, reports section of the agenda. The first item under that section is Sandy, high school student, environmental experience in Alaska.
Thank you. And while I introduce, I'm going to ask our students to step forward, and Ms. Mueller, please. This past summer, we had students who definitely met the efforts of HSD 2025 with the environmental sustainability, along with, you're going to hear a little bit about, I think, even a touch of global literacy as they did some cultural studies as well. But they participated in an amazing Alaska coastal ecology and conservation experience. And so this evening, a science teacher, high school science teacher, Patty Mueller, is here to introduce, and then you can see we've got many students who were very excited to share their experience with you this evening.
Yeah, good evening, and thanks a lot for inviting us here. I have nine of the 11 students that we brought to Alaska. They are still incredibly excited. They still come by on a regular basis, and they've actually, I think, one of the most successful parts of the program is they have asked now to do something here in this community. And they'll, you know, tell you about all their inspiration from Alaska, but that they're bringing it in. And Sandy, I'm just looking at the graduate learner outcomes, and the only one we didn't hit on this trip was technolala, I can talk, the literacy one with technology, that one? And that's just because, well, they use their cellphone on occasion, but generally, we were in places where we didn't have computers. So we hit every other one, which was really cool. So I'm going to let them really tell the story.
Okay. Well, I'm Katie Seelman, and I'm a junior.
Can you come to the microphone when you introduce yourselves?
I'm Katie Seelman, and I'm a junior.
I'm Elise Rulo, and I'm also a junior.
Andy Klonerman, junior.
Kelsey Robertson, junior.
Dan Kahoon, senior.
Molly Bickert, junior.
Camden Droppo, junior.
Mary Lesher, junior.
Mac Parsons, junior.
Okay, so we arrived in Anchorage, Alaska, and from there, we took a shuttle van down to Seward, Alaska, where we stayed there for the entire week. When we came to Seward, we discovered that it was primarily a fishing and tourism-based economy. It was the first city founded by the Russians, named after the congressman Seward, was affected by the 1964 Pacific Coast earthquake, started the original Iditarod, and home of the Alaska State Flag. Alaska's wildlife. We saw many of these animals, but the brown bear, black bear, and polar bears are commonly found in Alaska, moose, elk, caribou, musk ox, deer, bison, reindeer, fox, whales, porpoises, salmon, bald eagles, osprey, halibut, puffins, harbor seals, and sea lions.
This is the day after we arrived in Seward where we hiked up the mountain called Mount Marathon, which is right behind it. It's called Mount Marathon because competitors from all over the United States and, like, in our parts of the world, would run up that and then run all the way back down. So it's pretty hard, and it's one major thing that Seward does the entire year. This is when we reached our goal. It's in the bowl near, like, right around the, where we're climbing. And we started out in a temperate rainforest, which was pretty much all trees and is very humid and moist, and it had rain much as a rainforest in the Amazon. And then we hit, like, a specific line almost that all the shrubbery and, like, foliage would shrink about to, like, the size of us. So we walked through that most of the way, and then we hit another line and hit tundra territory climate, which was like this, where all the plants were about an inch off the ground. And it was really amazing. We had a lot of fun and talking on the way up, and, yeah. This is our next day when we went to, we took a boat trip through Resurrection Bay, which is where Seward is. This is the glacier at the end of our trip, which was about 50 miles or so away from Seward. We would see whales, like, I think we saw two or three on the way there, and we saw many wildlife, like, porpoises and puffins, and we saw a couple of bald eagles. And this is the glacier that we were at. We were about quarter mile to half mile away from here, and we could see chunks the size of houses falling off and sound like gunshots, and it was pretty cool seeing it, so. All right, so this is us where Dan was explaining, and...
And then we hit, like, a specific line almost, that all the shrubbery and, like, foliage would shrink about to, like, the size of us. So we walked through that most of the way, and then we hit another line and hit tundra territory climate, which was like this, where all the plants were about an inch off the ground. And it was really amazing. We had a lot of fun and talking on the way up, and yeah. This is our next day, when we went to, we took a boat trip through Resurrection Bay, which is where Seward is. This is the glacier at the end of our trip, which was about fifty miles or so away from Seward. We would see whales, like, I think we saw two or three on the way there. And we saw many wildlife, like, porpoises and puffins, and we saw a couple of bald eagles. And this is the glacier that we were at. We were about quarter mile to half mile away from here, and we could see chunks the size of houses falling off and sound like gunshots, and it was pretty cool seeing it, so. All right. So this is us, where Dan was explaining, and, next slide, please. I don't know. Well, some of the ice, back to the last one, you don't have to go back, but like, the houses of ice falling off, they'd create, like, seven-foot waves, and they'd still, like, rock our boat, even though we were, like, about a mile out. So you'd really, like, realize it. And then, one of the days, we did some volunteer work. We drove up to a salmon weir, which is like a type of hatchery. And this one guy had a little, he's like a really rough mountain man. He was really cool. He had the beard and everything. You're a typical Alaskan man, he'd say. And so he had this salmon weir, and he'd catch the salmon out of the river. And he called them his children, because they'd always come back every year through that same stream. So he was really passionate about, like, his work. And then he let us help him catch them out of the river with a net, and we put them into a holding tank. And then after the holding tank, they would take them out and check the eggs and the, for hatchery, and he'd fertilize them and stuff, and make sure that the salmon would be healthy. He'd give them shots and medicine, just to keep the production of the salmon up. Then later that day, we went down to this park by the glacial stream, and we did some water testing with a DNR officer kind of up in Alaska. And we did all these tests, to test the pH, the water level, and to see if the water is healthy enough for the fish to be in the river. And this, the salmon industry is like a big part of Alaska. We met some natives also, and they ate a lot of salmon. Thanks.
So we spent one of our days volunteering. For, part of it was testing water quality, and then the second half was we actually went and we learned about invasive species for Alaska, and they educated us about it. And so we all received these little packets that had a list of invasive species. Then we went out, and for a couple of hours, we went and pulled invasive species, as in our picture. We pulled oxide daisies and buttercups. And it was really interesting to see how Alaska is attacking this head-on, and they try and cut it off right away, so it doesn't turn into a big problem, even though it is a really big problem right now. And then we also spent a day kayaking. So we kayaked out to Cane's Head Beach, and then out, we went on a hike after that to Fort McGilvery, and, which was a World War II bunker, and it was built for, like, it took them a year to build, and to build, and then it was only in use for, like, two months, and it was to use against any Japanese attacks from the Aleutian Islands. But we got to walk through there, and it was just really dark and creepy, but it was really interesting to see. And then you could see the hole in the ground where the gun would have been, but all that was left was the hole and then a bunch of screws, and it was just, it was really interesting to see all this history that was in this small area.
One day, we went and learned about the native culture of Alaska. It's a tribe called the Kanai See Tribe, they're Denali, and they have their own fishery, and they're allowed to catch as many fishes they need because it's part of their culture. So we helped them bring in salmon with a net and watched them prepare it, and we ate it fresh for dinner, which was incredible. We also learned a lot of their tribal dances, which we're not going to show you, but, because it's kind of embarrassing, but we learned a lot about their tribal dances and what the native language of the songs means and how it relates to their history, which was really interesting. And then we also took a tour of Old Town Kenai, which has a lot of the Russian history in it, because Russia was there for so much, and many of the Kanai See are, have been part of the Russian Orthodox Church since they were converted. So we went around the town and looked at Russian Orthodox Church and saw a really cute baby moose, and looked at just a lot of the old buildings and a lot of the history from the town. And also, one day, we went to a different tribe that was in Seward and learned about the native tribal Olympic Games, which is where all the things you can compete in relate to their history, their abilities that they had to have to survive. And now they use that as a part of their culture to maintain their history, and it's a way to get everybody together and be how they used to. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. So one day, we got to hike the glacier. It was called the Exit Glacier. It was about a couple miles out of Seward. And the term Exit Glacier, we came from, there's a giant vast ice field, and that, like, the main part of the glacier comes out and towards Seward. And part of the history of the glacier is, I'm just going to start over. All right. Well, we just got to hike it, and in the brochure, it said we were going to look for ice worms, which are about an inch long, but we were never able to climb up to, far enough into the glacier due to the time we had. And climbing around the glacier was a lot of fun. We had to cross some crevasse, and some of them were about a hundred feet deep, but they'd only be, like, about a foot wide. And it was just really awesome, just walking across it and thinking you could fall in, but really, you wouldn't with all the safety gear, and the people that we went with were professionals. It was just a great day, and it was really sad that one of our students couldn't go with us. He hurt his knee earlier in the week in the Alaskan Olympics. He was doing the seal pull one and injured his knee, but he got to ice it with some fresh salmon.
This is one of our last slides. It was a license plate we found in Alaska that we really thought embodied what Alaska was all about and what we had on our trip, education and fun. And that's a picture from Fort McGilvery at Cane's Head. Thank you.
Very nice. Patty? I'm sorry, to capture you for just a minute, were you going to talk a little bit about what the students are planning to do locally?
Yeah. Again, your question? I'm sorry.
We, I was thinking you were going to talk a little bit about what the students, what some of the ideas they had for doing some local work.
Yeah. Well, what was really cool is that before we even left Alaska, they approached me, so it wasn't adult-oriented, it was student-oriented, and they said that they want to stay together and they want to do something in their own community. They were very impressed by how all the Alaskans they met seemed to really care about their community and especially the environment, and so they wanted to come here and bring that same kind of spirit here. So what they are doing is we are fortunate enough in the high school to have a leadership team, and on that team, there's a sustainability committee. You need to apply to be on that. So they have all turned in their applications as of today, actually, and I'm pretty sure they're all going to be accepted onto it. And the things that we do in that group, then, this is a sustainability leadership team. Last year, we planted a bunch of spruce trees. In fact, we gave a lot to the middle school, too, that we dug up, and they planted them there. We'll be working on our school forests, which has been certified in this last year, and we'd like to make, help make some learning stations to encourage more students to come out and use that facility for learning. They help with the community group Sustain Hudson and the Earth Day Art Project that Stuart Erickson is responsible for, so that group helps with that. Last spring, we also helped with Camp St. Croix, collaborated with the wider community of St. Croix County, actually, as part of an Earth Day event that was held there. So it's, it's very much student-generated, so they can come up with other ideas, too. I'll also be choosing some students from probably this group to be a part of the recycling committee that Ann Mitchell facilitates. So it's only limited to their ideas, and their ideas seem to be limitless, so it's lots of energy, lots of excitement. It was an amazing experience for all of them, just a truly life-changing on so many levels. So I just thank the district for supporting that kind of enrichment opportunity for our kids.
Thank you, Patty. Actually, if the students wouldn't mind staying for just a couple of minutes, the board members may have some questions for you, if you're open to a few questions.
Madam President, I have one. You mentioned, I think, the person who spoke about the bunker, that it was only open for two months. Why was that?
Yeah.
Go to the mic. The war was over.
It was because the Alaska, the Japanese took, I think it was three islands of the Aleutian Islands, and they were building up Seward, the Seward area, because Seward is the northernmost port that doesn't freeze over in the winter, so they wanted to protect it for trade reasons. And luckily, well, luckily, the US Army was able to kick the Japanese off the Aleutian Islands, and they didn't need it anymore, so they just abandoned it.
Go ahead. Madam President, one more question. What was the language of the Indian tribe that you, do you know? Or how did you communicate with them? How did you communicate with them, then?
They all spoke really good English. They never, they didn't have any, like, proper clicks or whatever. That's a really stereotypical thing for Alaska, but they had some languages called, like, Denina. The Denina language was lost, but still, some, they could write it, but it's really tough to, like, speak. Yeah. Most of the elders have passed away, but it was never passed down. They still speak Denina.
It is a team effort. Okay. Any other questions from the board members for the students, while we have them here? No?
Just to make a comment, Madam President. Certainly, we're very thrilled to see your passion for the environment and bringing it back to our community. You've had an experience that not all of our students have been able to have, but one that we hope you will share with your, those, the students that you know, and talk about this experience, because it sounds like it was a life-changing one for you, and you brought passion back to our community because of it. So that's, that's certainly going to benefit the rest of the students and this community, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is 2010-11 SMART goals, PEG. You're not coming along, PEG?
We're excited to be back. We were here in August presenting our results, and we're back presenting our new goals for this coming year. So we have been in a flurry with meeting with our school teams and working diligently to really present some, some real quality goals this year. There's some highlights that I want to share that we're going to talk about regarding the goals that you're going to notice as we move forward. First of all, one of the things that we have done, we have had building goals, obviously, but this year, at two of our sites, the middle school and elementary, we've moved to grade levels and departments having their own department or grade-level SMART goals. So that means they analyze their own grade level or department data and set goals based on areas of need that, that students had in, in a variety of different abilities. So you're going to see a lot more of tonight, of students, or excuse me, teachers owning their own goals, and that contributes to the attainment, hopefully, of the great, of the school and district SMART goals. The other thing that I'm going to talk a little bit about is the area of collaboration, and I've certainly spoke with you before, and you've been very gracious in supporting our common planning time at our sites. You're going to see more teacher-led collaboration in our goals this evening, where teachers are becoming high-performing teams, collaborating about their own data, innovating at their particular level. And so that's a change. One of the, sorry, one of the, I'm trying to give a signal. It didn't work. Oh, dear. Okay. So one of the changes in our practice in probably the last three years in particular is we've really moved from flying solo and, and as an independent contractor, where it's the teacher in their classroom, they stay in their classroom at their desk, working on their own student learning results. We don't have that kind of system anymore. What we've moved toward is more of a system where we, if you would look at that racecar for a moment, and if you would think about the student in the middle, or our students in our school are in the middle, and we have all of these different levels, varying levels of the district and the school, working toward that high-performing student and helping each student set their own pace and move around that track. And so what we've moved toward is a deeper level of collaboration, where teachers are actually talking about their student learning data, they're talking about looking at their lesson plans and sharing strategies that work, agreeing upon a particular best practice, and agreeing to try it out and come back and learn from one another. The other piece to this is the principal is right in that mix. So the principal is part of those school learning teams. Principals know who the kids are that are underperforming. They know what sorts of things, and they're working with their teachers on, how, how do we move all kids at each level? And so that's a key difference, too, where if I could show you a principal office from a while back, you would see it, the office, no, you would see an office where the principal worked in isolation at their desk. We have principals in classrooms working with teams and with individual teachers. The next slide shows, then, what our professional learning teams are about. These learning teams, just like that racecar being our student, they have a common goal. They are mutually accountable for each other's students, and they work interdependently, and that's really the, the sign of a high-performing professional learning team. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura Love, who's going to talk to you about some exciting work at the high school.
Okay. If you could go to the first slide, thanks. Last year, you saw that our goal was to increase students in AP courses. And this year, what we would like to do is kind of focus on subgroups in our school to increase the number of students in AP courses who are either in special education, come from low SES status, or are, we want to make sure that we have a balance in gender across the board in our AP classes. And we also want to make sure that all of our cultural backgrounds are represented there as well. Historically, student, some students don't see themselves as AP students. We want to make sure that, A, we're preparing them to be AP students, and that we're preparing them for college as well, so that they will be successful when they, when the doors are open to them, both in AP classes and in college. Our, our AP teams have been looking at those numbers in the past. We have seen an increase in special education students, specifically in the junior AP US History course, and they are getting support from their, their special ed teachers, but the AP teachers are diligently working with their special ed teachers to make sure that those kids are prepared. So we will be looking in the future at, from current AP enrollment to next year's AP enrollment, trying to increase the students in those subgroups, both with the AP team and with counseling teams. We'll also be looking at strategies for students before they get to AP, to make sure that they're prepared for AP. And you'll see, I'll actually share with you a goal that isn't written here, that's a multi-year goal regarding preparation for AP. But I would like to go on to our second goal, which is, again, similar to a goal that you saw last year. We're trying to make sure that all of our freshmen are prepared for high-level courses. So we want to make sure that by June of this year, students who are identified as at-risk, or what I would call at-promised, because we're looking at their strengths rather than their weaknesses, are no longer at risk of failure by the end of this year. Some strategies that we're going to use to get there are to be sure that we're giving specific, clear feedback to our students, and that they feel that we're giving them not only the learning target, but feedback on how to get to that learning target. We are also going to monitor their student progress and place students, instead of waiting till second semester, we're looking at guided study hall, as you heard about last year, actually from Ms. Mueller. We're going to be looking at guided study hall starting second quarter, based on some, some data we currently have, both from the middle school and from current ninth-grade classes, and then also recommendations from teachers. And then also recommendations from teachers by the end of first quarter, we'll be placing freshmen into guided study halls. Before I go to this goal, I mentioned something that is a multi-year goal. We're looking at really kind of, the goal will be something about how we want to prepare kids who see themselves. We have two levels of core courses in science and English. We have regular and we have an enriched. Sometimes kids see themselves as one or the other and they don't necessarily see themselves as moving from regular to enriched. And we want to increase the number of students moving from one year to the next, from a regular course, regular track, to an enriched track. Which will then prepare them in the, down the road for AP courses. So I guess again, I'm focusing on kids who don't see the door as open to them for enriched or for AP. And really encouraging those kids, helping them develop the skills and giving them the feedback necessary for them to take the enriched course levels and APs. So that's a multi-year goal. What we need to do is make sure that our courses are aligned from regular to enriched so that they can move even within a year. But also making sure that we're, we're giving them the scaffolding to get to enriched for the next year if they don't move within a year. So before I go to this climate goal, do you have any questions about the academic goals?
Madam President, I have a question regarding the first goal, Ms. Love. Regarding this, you mentioned a number of the subgroups, and one of those is a gender subgroup. I'm curious to know which gender? Is it male or female?
Well, we're currently fairly well-balanced in most areas. Some AP courses, we see higher numbers of males. Art, for example, we see higher numbers of females, very few males. And so we're just keeping an eye on that and wanting the AP teachers to get the support from other teachers too, to promote a balance for the future. Other questions on the academic goals? Okay. So on the climate goal, by the end of this year, we would like to have 95% of our students report a positive personal connection with at least one staff member. This is the resiliency research and, and the assets research that you've heard a little bit about. We've done very well in Hudson. But we want to make sure that kids don't feel like they go through the day, if they have a really rough day, they don't have at least one staff member, one adult in the building that they could go to with an issue. So the way that we're going to do that, actually tomorrow, we're spending a good deal of, of time focusing on the juniors and seniors. Looking at what relationships we have with those students and which students don't already have a personal connection with at least one adult. And then we're trying to adopt students who may not have a personal connection. We don't really want them to think of themselves as being adopted, that's why I looked around a little bit. Because it'll be a subtle thing. So it will be, a teacher will, or a staff member outside of the classroom would take a look at which kids don't currently have connections. Do I have regular contact with that student and could I just reach out a little bit every day to make a personal connection? So that again, students don't feel like this is an impersonal setting. Obviously with 1,660 students, it's challenging to know all of the kids. And, and yet it's critical that no student feels like a number. So we'll be doing some adoptions tomorrow. Guided study hall will be implemented, it says by October, but we'll be actually beginning the guided study hall process on November 7th or 8th, whichever day that is, Monday. And then we are currently working on each teacher sending home at least two positive communications per week. We did at the beginning of the year, talk about focusing on students who wouldn't typically get positive communication. Just making, making sure we're looking for positive participation in class or any kinds of positive feedback that we can give to students and their parents. And then each Friday, these are the actions that the SMART team came up with in August. But each Friday, teachers are being asked to pick one class, period. Fifth hour tends to be about 10 minutes longer because of our lunch schedule. And that's a nice time to do five-minute Friday fun and not focus so much on content, but making sure that we're having fun in our learning communities in the classroom as well. Any questions on the climate goal?
Madam President? Lynn?
I was just curious, how are you communicating with the parents? Or is it a call, is it a note, is it an email?
We, we ask teachers to do that in multiple ways. So it, it's not one specific route, because sometimes it's more effective with some parents through phone calls, sometimes a note card home, sometimes an email. So whatever way that they feel is most effective with that family.
How do we know what that is? Is it just by conversation with them that we know how we should be contacting them? Or is there something that they fill out that tells us preferred contact information or how do we know how to connect?
That's a good question. Well, I'll ask our teachers tomorrow what kinds of feedback they're getting. And actually, part of our survey of staff will be, what kinds of positive communication did you get back from parents when you made those communications home?
Tom?
Just congratulations again on, I think, hitting the mark here. This aligns itself very closely with developmental assets. And the proven fact of relationships with another adult, with kids, increases the opportunity for that child to make good, positive decisions. Mike, one of two questions. One is, is the objective here in this, in this program with these connections to enhance the academic experience, the social behavior? You know, do you have an objective specifically to this?
I would say a positive connection with school, sort of beyond the classroom. We want every student to be involved in a co-curricular activity, but that doesn't happen. So if we can get them connecting to adults in the classroom, or outside of the classroom. Or even if it's in the classroom, but it's in a personal way, so they don't see it as content-related. Then it motivates them to want to be at school. And so it impacts everything. I think it impacts their motivation to do well in that class. It, it motivates them to behave better in school. They don't want to let that adult down, so there's, there's a variety of reasons that we are doing that.
Thank you. Second question is, in your analysis of the data in terms of who is connected, who's not connected, the students. What do you, I mean, out of 1,700, 1,600 students, I mean, how many of the students in your view, our analysis, are not connected?
That's a good question too, and we're actually, I meant to mention this, but we're doing a survey next week of the students. It'll be an anonymous survey and we'll do it by grade level and by gender. And it will be asking those kinds of questions. Do they feel that they have some adult in the school they could go to when they have an issue that's of serious nature? So we won't be able to identify which students, because it's real important in that case, that they feel it's anonymous. So then they're not going to, you know, receive a bad mark because they gave us a bad mark. So, but we'll be giving that survey next week and then we'll be giving that same survey to students toward the end of the year. So that we can see how much we've grown based on our strategies. And I think we can probably take a look at our attendance data and discipline data to see who's still disconnected by the end of the year.
Other questions?
Madam President, thank you. And Laura, I apologize if, if you perhaps answered this, I was having, am I on? I'm okay here. I was losing my computer screen, so I was feeling, I may not have been paying attention. But with regard to the Friday activity for increasing, can you just tell me a little bit more about that? What, what that's going to entail? What sort of a, what sort of a time commitment are we talking about there?
The teachers came up with the idea, they talked about kind of building a learning community in the classroom. So they're looking at, they called it, initially called it five-minute Friday fun. Fifth period is about 10 minutes longer because of our lunch period. So they felt like they wanted to encourage the teachers, their colleagues, to do it during fifth hour because it wouldn't take away from instructional time. But they really gave their colleagues freedom to choose which period of the day that they were going to do that. And the, the qualitative feedback from students, they wanted to ask their colleagues to gather was whether or not if they missed a Friday fun activity, were the students asking for that?
And I guess my, my concern is that this would, it sounds like this would be a very minimal time commitment.
Yes. Five minutes or less.
Okay.
Yep.
That's always my concern that, you know, that way of view, we have sort of limited instructional time.
Absolutely.
We don't want to waste any, even though, you know, I understand the importance of the, the social connection.
And that's a good point. One thing that I'm sharing feedback with teachers about is if kids are packing up two minutes early, three minutes early on a regular basis. That's accumulated lost instructional time, so we'll be looking at that across the board.
Great, thanks Laura.
You're welcome.
No? Thank you Laura. Mr. Koch from the middle school.
From where else? First of all, I, I want to say to Laura that I really like the, the climate, the climate goal. Especially the positive contacts home, because we've been doing that and it does indeed work. It does certainly help in the climate in the building and I, I think it's an honorable, very honorable goal. And if we can support that. We will.
Close to your mic, thank you.
So, at the middle school, and by the way, we may need a new climate goal if we keep getting any bigger. So we might want to keep that in mind too for, for the future. I had to editorialize there for just, just a moment. We have, as Peg mentioned, shifted a little bit with respect to our SMART goal focus. It is now more specifically located in, in classrooms and areas of need. The teachers through looking at their own data with their own assessments, information or data that has come from the WKCE or the NWEA exams, the MAPS tests. Have helped them to isolate and indicate where we have some weaknesses. So these have a narrower focus than what you've heard us report to you before. And really what we're looking at here, and the percentages are high, as I believe they should be high. We certainly want to strive to go as far along that continuum as we can, as long as we continue to make progress. That obviously is our goal, but we are motivated by the fact that we've put 90% on there. And we are also cognizant of the fact that the summatives that we would utilize across the board in our, among our students. For students with special needs, for example, those common summatives would be modified or adjusted to a certain extent. So we've decided that, you know, 90% sort of sits pretty well in the pursuit of these particular goals. So that in sixth grade, we're going to be focusing on proficiency in multinumeral computational skills. And in seventh grade, it's again, multinumeral computational skills, but adding on, building on to that, including decimals where we have found weaknesses in the past. And in eighth grade, proficiency in multinumeral computation, including decimals and real numbers. All of those at all, each grade level administered by a common summative, as well as common formatives along, along the way. I hope you don't ask me too much with respect to multinumeral questions. But it's like, you know, three-digit numbers multiplied or divided by two or three-digit number, that sort of thing, which we've found to be kind of a weakness amongst our students. In seventh grade, what we're looking at here is that students will be proficient or higher in writing a properly supported response to content probes. This again is a parallel to the work that they've been doing with writing labs, the lab work that has been happening in science classes. In seventh grade, again, it's, although they have a particular rubric, it's a score of a six, a differentiated rubric to determine proficiency. And in eighth grade, the students will score proficient or higher in a science lab writing. What you may notice here is there's a continual trend that the grade, the, the goals in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are related. Sort of scaffolded, trying to build that throughout, so that the data that we do gather, not only can we use the individual grade levels, but will have some impact on what's happening on the grade level before or after, or on either side. Social studies, again, 90% is the, is the number we're looking at here. Sixth, seventh, and eighth grade socialists have demonstrated proficiency in writing rubric and global awareness as measured by a written response. And the social studies teachers have been working diligently at coming up with specifically a, a prompt. That allows them to get a complete measure or better measure of what students bring to the table with regard to global awareness. And they're going to begin focusing there by simply using a baseline with respect to their awareness of the historical nature of other cultures. Other contributions that other cultures have made to, you know, our own. And using that as their, as their baseline in terms of a written response, you know, from the students. One of the things I will say that is through, throughout the, the building, teachers are working with pre-tests as well as common formatives. Those are the two, I think, technique targets that we have this year. But one thing we've found, it's a little interesting, we haven't really had to deal with this much before, is that we give a pre-test to say a sixth grade student. They have a tendency to panic a little bit when they don't know material that's on the pre-test. So what we're trying to do now is figure a more palatable way of administering a pre-test so it doesn't seem as evaluative, you know, in, in the beginning. But it's something that we sort of discovered that surprised us a little bit. And it wasn't just limited to sixth graders. Students generally don't like to face an assessment of some sort when they don't think they have any of the information. But of course, it's a double-edged sword. We need that information for a baseline that helps us guide instruction. How we're going to make some of this happen, implementing, collecting data and discussing results, grade level curriculum, SMART goals for the purpose of adjusting instructional strategy. That's really what we want to do. We want to continue to adjust our strategies so that students not only become more aware, but are able to internalize the information, what they're learning, being able to use it in multiple ways and in multiple situations. Grade level teams will deepen collaboration as they collect and discuss data on the, on their summative assessments and in association with the goals, using protocols. And we've been doing this for a little while, but it's like everything else, practice makes perfect. And we need to continue to work on implementing the protocols and I think moving that to a higher level of collaboration. Although I do think presently that's a pretty strong element that we have in the, in the middle school. And then the ongoing professional development, an expectation of, to use the pre-assessment, the common summatives and formatives that I was talking about. And to make those proper and appropriate instructional decisions. One of the things that, sort of in a summary, I would simply say is that we're, we're trying to move our staff from invitation to utilize these practices. To an expectation that they will utilize these practices. And we've made really great strides in the last two or three years in that particular area. The group that I haven't talked about is language arts. And Sandy and Peg and I, along with Mary's been involved in this. Language arts is in a curriculum review cycle right now. It would be perceived a little as though we might be pouring it on when they're trying to reorganize their curriculum with regard to their knowledge of the common, the new common core standards. Identifying the essentials that are embedded in that, along with developing pre-tests, common formative assessments and common summatives. We think that we need to get that aligned and organized before we would step back into the process of focusing on a very specific SMART goal. So as each, if I understand it correctly, Sandy, as each group comes through on the curriculum review process, at the middle school anyway, they'll have a little different task than the other core curricular areas have in the building. Questions?
You actually answered the one that was on my mind, Dan, which was the noticeable absence of a SMART goal around language arts, so thank you for that. So did you say when you would expect that that would come back on the list of SMART goals for the middle high?
Right, we, we expect language arts to be online next fall.
Okay, all right, very good.
They got a lot of work to do for the rest of this year.
Other questions for, for Dan? No?
Just a, just a quick, Madam President, thank you. Dan, the seventh grade science, what, oh, thank you, it's leaning this way, there we go. Differentiation skill rubric, what is that and how good is a score of six?
Well, it's sort of like how good is an A, B, C, D, you know, it's on a, you know, like on a four-point scale. You know, the four is the highest and the one is the lowest. They've developed a rubric that simply is identified in six, in six steps, that six being the highest.
Okay, oh, okay, I didn't know where six, you know, didn't mean nothing to me. So six is proficient?
Right, well, six would be.
Or more than proficient?
Probably more than proficient.
Okay.
And we're, we're also working at a little different way of organizing some of our rubrics as a result of a conference we just recently attended. We've got, I think, a pretty interesting way of developing the rubric and assessing whether or not students are proficient.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Peg?
Just as my elementary colleagues come forward, I just wanted to mention something about the data that they are going to be presenting. The, the cognitively delayed students are not. are not in these particular numbers for obvious reasons as we're looking at grade level reading scores. So I just wanted to make that clear, that those populations are not in these particular numbers. Thanks. And Ann, I believe, is going to start.
Good evening. We're giving you the big picture view with the elementary team tonight. And as I think about the, if you'd go back one more slide, Diane, please. The slide with the aerial photos, we have Wendy Langer, an associate principal at the high school, to thank for that. She and her husband took those this summer. And as I look at that and I think about the size of our district, you can imagine the potential risk for division or competition or a waste of energy when you're trying to pull all six elementaries together with a common focus to make what's happened at the high school happen later. Thanks to this collaborative team, I think that that effort of pulling us together, the strong collaboration, really creates the results that you've witnessed over the years. And it, we experienced, I think, that gratifying feel. We're kind of the envy of some of the people that were at the WASCD conference because they saw us not only work hard together, but play hard together. And that makes for a strong team. Now the next slide. Thank you. To the end of that continuous progress and improvement, our goal last year was 86% of K-5 learners, actually it was 84, and we exceeded that. We made 86% of K-5 learners reading at or above grade level as measured by common assessments, by the DRA and FNP last year. This year, our goal is 88% of our K-5 learners reading at or above grade level. But the slight difference, you'll see it, the last part of the statement is "as measured by common assessments." DRA and FNP are still in place and will still rely on that data. However, we're looking for ways to expand the way we measure growth because we have access to MAPS data, measures of academic progress, and some common formative assessments that we're using at different grade levels, for example, the DIBELS at the K and one level. And then grade level team-developed assessments that are part of their cause goals that you'll hear about from another principal on the team. I'm passing it off to Susie.
You have heard, to reach our 88% goal, one of the things that our teachers are doing is providing personalized instruction for our students in small group reading. We are starting now to have personalized SMART goals, as Peg alluded to earlier. Every grade level has analyzed their data and determined a need for that grade level. And grade levels have determined a specific SMART goal in an area of reading. So for instance, some of our SMART goals at Hudson Prairie and some of the other schools are around the phonics area, or around fluency, or are around vocabulary or comprehension. So they have a specific learning goal for their grade level team. They're using their day six collaboration time to learn together. There are book talks going on, a lot of reading of articles, watching of videos. So they're learning together during those day six common planning times. They're also trying and implementing some of the strategies and reflecting on those strategies and learning together. So, besides having the personalized teaching, we also have personalized SMART goal and learning for our teachers. And that's going to support our 88%. We, as a principal team, as Ann spoke of, we are committed and dedicated to being on the same page with everything. And one of the things that we are doing is we are meeting on a regular basis and sharing our data and sharing our strategies, just as the teachers are, so that we can learn from one another and really do the best that we can do as a system here in Hudson.
Just as in any system or any setting, there exists cause and effect relationships. And in Hudson, we've been firmly focused on strong student progress and learning results. And really that is the effect in our cause and effect relationship. What we're looking at now, what we've learned we need to do is look at the causes. And those causes in that relationship are the adult actions. So what we're looking at doing is setting what we call cause data goals for each school and sometimes in individual grade levels. The idea of a cause data goal is to apply measures to the adult actions and those things that we've determined, we know will have a result on student learning. The way we're doing this is through the SMART teams. They're determining what causes we feel and that we've studied will have the greatest impact on student learning. And those measurements really include ways we can track the fidelity and the way that our teachers are doing what it is we said we'll do because we believe it'll have an impact on student learning. So as I said, the SMART team is working hard on developing those goals. And as a principal team, again, we're working together to share ideas, brainstorm, talk about struggles we may be having, and to make sure that we can move ahead together. Thank you.
Just as our grade level teams were looking at what would be the action that they could take, picking a specific area, whether it was vocabulary or fluency, that they could work on as a team that would help more children reach higher levels of learning. That's exactly what we did as a principal team. We looked at what actions that we could take that would have the highest impact. And one of the ones that we've been working on for a few years, but have recommitted ourselves to this year, is to give even more personalized coaching. And one of the ways that we have done that as administrators, K-12, is by putting aside time to make sure that we're in classrooms. Now, at the elementary level, we've committed to two days a week in classrooms to be able to provide feedback to our teachers. One of the ways that we do that is try to give them a reflective question that they can ponder. It's a nonjudgmental question, it's a neutral question, but when they can ponder and then have a conversation with us about. And so, that's one of the pieces that we know is really, really important. We want it personalized for our students and we know that our teachers have also different needs for their instruction. That kind of leads into our second piece. We know that teachers are at different areas on a continuum. And I'll talk about the three highest levels of the continuum when we look at our teachers. We have teachers that are conscious, they've gone through training, they know what the best practices are, but they're still using some maybe outdated practices. Then we have our teachers that are really taking action now. They've had the training and they're doing what they should be doing that are the best practices for our children. And then finally, we have the refinement stage, that not only are they doing it, but they're doing it at a really high level. They're our master teachers. And so, the second piece that our principal team is really working on is collaborate together on how we move all of our teachers along that continuum, to move them all towards being master teachers in our district.
If you're feeling overwhelmed, I think here's one more goal where we're focusing on collaboration. And I think, as Peg showed the picture of a teacher working in isolation, one of the ways to relieve stress is to work harder and better as teams, to use each other as support. And so, we've used a rubric that actually looks at different areas of collaboration. And some of our buildings are focusing on conflict resolution. We're trying to move our teams to higher levels. One of the ones that is on the rubric that we used was using technology more in the area of collaboration. And as we were down at ASCD, the principals were blogging during the presentation. And we hope to have more things going on in our buildings where our teams are collaborating, maybe even across the district, but using technology more. And so, we're hoping to move all of our teams to a higher level. And that's a district goal also. So again, the principals working on that together is going to provide our support system for our teachers.
And in addition to the action steps that you heard before, there's one more that we'd like to talk about. And that is that the elementary principals will utilize data walks to gather information, to gauge whether or not the goal of 90% implementation of Reader's Workshop is happening in the classrooms. Will gather data on a regular basis in order to ensure the expectation that every child in every classroom, every day, is receiving high-quality literacy instruction, which will go back to that 88% of students will be at or above grade level.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? I have one. It's a generic question. And then I have a couple of comments. I'll start with the comments because they're quicker. So Dolph, when you talked about the consciousness and the action, just as a catchy buzz phrase, because I see that coming through every once in a while, it's just a way to help people remember things. In some form organizations I was in, we refer to that as head, heart, hands. But it's the same concept, but it helps people remember it. And then somewhat facetiously, but not really, Dave, I was thinking, in the cause and effect, if you come back and start talking about R score correlation between what you're doing and what outcome you're seeing, I'm just going to get goosebumps. So. In all seriousness, my generic question is, for Peg or any one of the principals, and actually that would extend to Laura and Dan if they're still here as well, remind me the process that you go through to develop the SMART goals, because I know that it's a broader group than just the principals making those choices. So I think that's a good reminder for the board of how widespread that involvement gets when you go through this process.
What we do is, we have an August retreat, which is generally here at Rivercrest. And we spend time looking at our data. We hear from generally some best practices from speakers around the country via videotape. And we really build our teachers' background knowledge about what it takes to move students to grow to higher levels in learning. And so that's part of what we do. There's also in district, or excuse me, in building support. Generally, principals spend time in the fall with their SMART team as they finalize their plans to come here and then meet with them regularly. We also, with elementary, last year had a mid-April retreat where we looked one evening at actually their student learning data and set some goals for the following year. And then the other piece that I think really contributed to moving our SMART teams to really being high-performing is, we attended a two-day leadership conference in Minnetonka. We had, I think we were the largest group, I believe, in the whole area around Minneapolis-St. Paul. We were actually recognized because our 69 principals and teachers, which was a huge group of people that went to Minnetonka High School and learned from some of the really renowned educational experts around the country. We stayed one evening, we stayed later, and actually planned into the evening. And so Hudson was recognized for our diligence, as well as the size of group that we brought. So what that did is it really provided inspiration for the SMART teams. And when they hear from national speakers about their craft, it really, really resonates. And I think you'd agree that that really motivated our SMART teams.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Please.
This evening, through this report, you've had evidence of why the Hudson administrative team was the talk of the state teaching and learning and leading conference in the last few weeks. You know, we're always improving practices and the goals themselves are improving and raising our own responsibility and accountability for student learning results. But we also heard embedded in the comments of our principals and Peg as well, that we're continually improving our practices throughout this process. Little things that don't relate directly to the goal, but have an impact. Like Laura talked about at the high school, monitoring how much time in each class, there is, the students are actually packing up instead of having instructional time. Dan talked about looking at how we assess students and improving that based on what we learned at the conference. And Ann, as well as many of our elementary principals, Ann specifically talked about looking at our assessments, but multiple measures in a way that we haven't done in the past, to help improve student learning. So, that was embedded all the way through this report that's about new goals and moving forward. And that's the reason that they were so recognized by their districts as having a common focus. That's very unusual in schools. Usually schools are competitive, unfortunately, in districts throughout the state. And that is one thing that is not at all about this team. This team is about moving forward together for the sake of all of our students to be high-performing learners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, Sandy, I'm going to talk about our ACT and AP results.
Good evening. This evening, with me is Stephanie Briggin. Stephanie is an educator working on her Director of Instruction license. And so she'll be presenting with me this evening. And she also presented at the Learning and Program Development Committee meeting as well. Tonight, we share our update on ACT and AP results. From 1950 until about 1996, you probably remember hearing ACT referred to as the American College Testing. But since 1996, its actually official name is truly just ACT. And that's to reflect the fact that it is now a very global organization, a very diverse global organization as well. The ACT is a curriculum-based measure of college readiness. Thanks Diane. And it's scored on a 1 to 36 scale and required by many universities and colleges for entrance. ACT also has expanded its programs and can also assist in evaluating work and career readiness. The composite score that you see there recognizes the percent or reflects the students in grade 12 who took the ACT as juniors or seniors. So again, we're looking at the class, our senior class, 2010, and the juniors and whether they took the test as juniors or seniors. So you can see our scores over time, the past five years. In every case, again, we're above the state average. You can see the state this past year dipped just a slight dip, no, two tenths of a point is not a lot. But on the other hand, Hudson grew by two tenths. We're kind of making ourselves, kind of make our trend line in that upward direction once again.
The next four slides will be comparisons, just showing you how Hudson ranks against some other school districts. And they'll all be in the same format, the composite score in the first, in the middle column, and then the percentage of students tested in the right-hand column. This first one is a comparison of Hudson against the schools in our CISA, so kind of our neighboring school districts. And as you can see, Hudson is very close to the top, just a few tenths of points below River Falls. Historically, River Falls and Hudson have kind of interchanged for that top spot. So, we didn't come out on top this time, but we are obviously very close. And it's very good to note that Hudson always has a strong showing against the other schools in our CISA. Compared to the schools in the Big Rivers Conference, we did come out on top, which is wonderful. Again, just a little bit above some of the competitors. But also something else to point out on this slide is the percentage of students tested. We have, in Hudson, have shown that we've tested a much larger percentage of students than the others in our conference. So that it's very noteworthy as we are preparing more students for college. Because we are always trying to raise the bar and improve in the Hudson School District, we also wanted to see how we fell in comparison to other high-performing districts across the entire state, just because we want a high measure of excellence. So this slide shows that comparison. As you can see, we do fall towards the bottom, again, well above the state average. But it is important that it is only the difference of a couple of points. However, we are about one point below the bulk of those high-performing school districts. Most of those school districts do fall on the other side of the state of Wisconsin, more in the CISA I area of the state. And they do look a lot different than us in makeup and population, size, those kinds of things. So because we didn't feel that this was a complete apples-to-apples comparison, we wanted to give you another measure. So the next slide shows Hudson compared to high-performing districts of comparable size. So that gives you a little bit better measure there. And as you can see, we fall kind of right in the middle with just two school districts performing just a little bit better than the Hudson School District. But again, doing very well in comparison to the entire state. Some other things to note, the last slide had shown the percentage of students tested. And Hudson was a little bit lower in that area. But as you can see, compared to schools of our similar size, we're doing very well in that. And we did talk a little bit at the Learning and Program Development meeting, how we're going to increase, continually increase rigor and students entering into AP courses to continue to raise that number of students tested.
The other piece in regards to the ACT, even though Ms. Love's only been here for a few weeks, we've already had discussions with Mr. Koch and Ms. Love as far as what else we can do with the preparation for the ACT. There is an eighth-grade test called the Explore and a 10th-grade test called the Plan. Currently, in the Hudson School District, we do the Plan as an option for kids. Those who want to take it, come on a Saturday and take that test. We are already considering now for next fall to put both that Explore in place and the 10th-grade Plan, which then gives us some earlier data on how kids are performing, and we can make some adjustments and see what's happening. Those two tests are considered like a pre-ACT, so that would allow us to have some other information on students as we go along. And we think that would be a good step for us to add that piece to our assessment program. Advanced placement, as Laura Love mentioned earlier, the district is focused on increasing the number of students in AP courses, the number of students who participate in those exams and pass them, as well as the number of students who are going to be prepared to enter AP courses. And an example of what we're trying to do there just next week, we'll have, I have all six 12 language arts teachers coming together, and we're actually going through an exercise of AP alignment. So if this is what we want in 12th grade AP, what do we have to do in 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, and work on the content and skills up and down the ladder? So another piece that just involves us getting prepared to get more students ready for that type of rigor. The Advanced Placement Program, as you know, enables students to pursue college-level studies while still in high school. And at Hudson High School, we currently offer 12 AP courses within our four walls. And last spring, 280 students took 436 tests in May 2010. And we look at our data over time, you can see we are doing exactly what we want. Notice the number of students in those courses has increased, the number of exams goes right with that increase, and then the percent of exams passed, considering those numbers is very strong, very strong. We're very pleased with those numbers. On the next slide, you can see then again, if we look at the juniors and seniors, we can see the numbers who have taken at least one exam, the total numbers of juniors and seniors, and then the percent participating has gone up now to 35.4. So again, our data is going in the direction that we'd like to see. And then the last slide is showing, line graph showing that same kind of information, looking at the number of students. And you can see that last data point in the upward direction, and then definitely the number of exams in that upward direction. We anticipate seeing another increase next year due to both the solid enrollment numbers in our current AP courses as well as the addition of our online AP courses. So again, we should see those numbers continue to rise. And the state comparative data is not yet available. That'll be a few months coming so that we can share some of that information as well. And this information was shared at Learning and Program Development at our September meeting. Questions, please?
Any questions for Sandy or Stephanie? Thank you very much.
I do.
I'm sorry, Mark?
Go ahead, Mr. Bell.
Thanks, Mr. Kuzmic. Just a couple of questions. What percentage of our students, 71% take the ACT? How many people took the SAT?
I don't, I wouldn't have a percentage on the top of my head, but it's a very small percentage because most of our students tend to go to Midwest schools, and they tend to look at the ACT. But I can get back to you that.
Because I think there's some schools where you have to take the SAT, right?
Correct, especially, especially the two coasts tend to really go for that.
What do the top-performing schools that you reviewed, what are they doing differently than us in terms of those ACT scores?
The conversations I've had would lead to exactly what we're trying to do, making sure that we have lots of preparedness in our students so that we have more students ready to take those courses. Some of the pieces with our assessments, so we know what students to trigger and move into those courses. And a lot of it's going to be exactly what Ms. Love's doing as far as those connections with students, so that we kind of really encourage students who are fully capable to be involved in those types of classes. Some students will take regular English or regular social studies just because, you know, it's an easy A. And we want students to really be challenged and want that challenge and go for that upper level course.
I just want to add on to that, Brian, about your comments. Certainly, it's about a system, and the system starts at early childhood all the way through. And as the elementary principals are focusing on students graduating at a higher level out of elementary and moving into middle school, and as the middle school does the same thing and connects from level to level, that creates a system that students are more prepared when they get to high school, and then the high school moves them further. But it's a multi-year process for, that did generally happen.
Yeah, I think, you know, that's for sure, so I can see that. But are they specifically doing, is everyone taking the Explore test and the other, is that part of, instead of being on a Saturday, is that part of the curriculum in those other schools?
In many of them, yes.
Yeah. So should we consider having that as part of our curriculum?
Yes, that's what we're looking to put in place next fall, correct.
Okay. And do they have, do they do like preparatory work for those tests during the day during the curriculum as well?
I'm not finding that, they pretty much do the same as we do as far as offer some ACT options. We have that available for students as an online option currently. We do some tutoring options as well. I'm not finding anything above and beyond what we're doing with, in that area right now.
Okay.
Right, Mark?
Thank you, Madam President. Sandy and Stephanie, I'm curious, have we been increasing our percentage of our students that have been taking the ACT? Historically, I don't see any data for that. We're doing about 71% now, which I think is very good, but where have those numbers been historically?
More like in the 60%, oh, here.
In 2004 through 2005 school year, it was 68%, and then we had a little dip in 2005 to 60%. But it has been increasing from then to 60%, 60.8% in 2006, 62% in 2007, and then 2008, 2009 school year last year was up to 67%. So we've made a jump from 67% last school year to 71% this year. So it has been increasing.
And that certainly is, you know, good. I mean, just, you know, it's a little, it's a little disappointing, I guess, when you look at the composite ACT score that, you know, I guess I had termed relatively flat, although I'm thinking that as we increase our percentage, that's, those trends are probably working against each other. Obviously, you increase the pool and it may be hard to move that, so.
Right, so right now, we're trying to kind of like increase the pool.
Right.
And then now we'll raise the rigor.
Now, we want to hopefully move those scores up, absolutely. And just one question, I think it was, I think it was Stephanie that also mentioned that when we're comparing ourselves to some of the high-performing districts, that many of them are clustered on the eastern side of the state, that, but you said that demographically we don't really compare that well. I don't know, is it because of the size of the district or what's going on there?
Well, many of them are smaller-sized districts. One particular, you know, if you look at like a Whitefish Bay, it's a smaller district. And then demographically, it looks a little differently than we do as far as especially some of the economic situation, the amount per pupil that they're funding is going on there.
Okay. I'm sorry, what was that?
Well, I, just written down for myself, a note to ask Tim in the future to identify how much is invested in those students' education in those districts, because that's an important component that we need to look at as well.
Okay, okay, I suppose that'd be, because I guess I would think from a, you know, socioeconomic point of view, we should be, you know, pretty, pretty, pretty good. We shouldn't have any real, real challenges, I wouldn't think, in Hudson from that perspective.
Not challenges, but just, for example, if you take Kettle Moraine, just, I've heard this data recently, they have 90% of their students going on to college. That's not the percentage that Hudson has at this time. Certainly, that's an impact and a road that we're on to have more of our students going on to college.
So if, I think we had our students doing ACT prep, and I mean, if we, if that was what we were doing, I think we had more students going to college if that was what our curriculum was all about. Instead of being on Saturday, it was during the school day.
And I think that's, that's the change that we're talking about making. The prep itself, and whether it's the Plan or the Explore, if that's what you're talking for, the prep, we have to look at what the research says about what's the most effective practices to raise ACT scores. And preparation may not be the most significant. That's something that we have to research, and I know that Sandy has done that. I can see Laura out there has probably some information about that. And that's where we need to make really quality decisions by looking at that research.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Next, middle school construction update, Tim.
Okay, thank you. Literally about a day after our September board meeting, we talked a little bit at the September board meeting about some soils correction we needed to do at the middle school. Literally about a day later, we were informed that we needed to do a little more extensive work on the soils correction. So that was, it was an impact overall to the budget. However, we're still on budget, and that's why we have the contingencies built in as just for those types of things. So one of the, one of the things that really helped us out was we created a borrow pit, and we were able to take materials from one site over by the middle school, transfer them into where we needed those corrected soils to be. And by doing that, you know, we want to avoid any unusual settlement of the building. So, and we've also worked with Hoffman, working with our engineers to develop some reinforced footings and the slabs. And so those are being reinforced with quite a bit of rebar, and we're going to have a very strong structure in place. So that's, the bad news is we had to do some additional soils corrections, but the good news is we're going to have a very strong structure in place when we're done. The update on the progress so far is that they're working right now, they're working on the masonry walls, the three walls that are connecting to the middle school in Hudson Prairie. The south wall is getting close to completion. West wall is getting probably about three-quarters completed as of today, and then they have the north wall to work on as well. The sub-level, sub-level is done except for the slab. Of course, the inside needs to be completed, but the slab will be poured this month. And we're looking at structural steel coming in this month, and we'll also have, let's see, we'll have structural steel, and then we'll also have roofing. We expect to have the structure enveloped and closed, closed off to the elements in November around Thanksgiving. So right now, overall, still on schedule to open in January, and even with the soils correction, we're still on budget. So I think that's overall very good news, and it's progressing, actually progressing very quickly out there.
Questions for Tim? Tom?
Madam President, Tim, as I recall, and my memory, maybe it's good, it's just short, you know, the sub-level was a contingency. We were going to rough that in, and if there was money available, we were going to finish it. Is that correct?
Yeah, the sub-level, in the, in the beginning, the sub-level was something we had identified as a need for additional storage space. And as we went through the budget, it was in, then it was out as we looked at some of the estimates, and then in the final analysis, we were able to include it. So that will be, it will be finished off.
So it is, it is on schedule to be completed in the budget as it is now?
Yes, yes. Long answer to a short question.
Any other questions for Tim? All right, Tim, moving on to the 2010-11 proposed budget update.
Okay, thank you. Not, I don't have a lot of information to update you on, other than we did receive, Department of Revenue did release their valuations, district valuations, and they really came in very close to what we had predicted and what we had estimated. We had estimated a decrease of 7.78%. They actually came in, the decrease was a little bit lower than that, it was about 7.71%, so about $2.3 million higher than where we, where we first estimated. So it's very, very close. The changes in that estimate, if you compare it looking back to the annual meeting, were St. Joe was down about, went down a little bit further, about a million dollars additional, and the township, Troy Township, went up about three and a half million. So those are the big differences. Otherwise, the city remained the same as what we had previously looked at in September. So that will, you know, we're still looking at a zero levy increase, zero percentage increase on the levy. And then with these numbers coming in a little bit higher, the mill rate will actually drop a little bit, so.
Question for Tim on the budget update. Thank you, Tim. We are now on topics for action. We have one item to approve before we get to the consent agenda items. The first one under topics for action is the athletic trainer contract with Larson Sports. Tim?
Thank you. This, this contract is really a combination of two contracts that we've had previously. What we've done is just combined them into one contract. And what it consists of is the athletic training services that we receive for sporting events. That's the first portion of the contract. And then the second part of the contract is the strength conditioning portion, and that's related to, you've heard of, you've heard Stephanie DeVos talk about the district's Raider Elite program. And that's the, that's the piece with strength conditioning, weight room training for athletes that they participate in, and that, and actually, that part of the contract is paid for through students, student fees. We've gone through and just re-upped and had, had the contract reviewed by legal counsel. And so I don't have anything, anything more to add on that unless you've got questions.
Madam.
Mark?
Tim, just a question, are we compensating Larson at the same rate that we did last year?
Yes, this, this is no change, no change to these fees compared to last year's fees.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Lynn?
It's an annual contract. How did we come up with our monthly fee? Was it based on the total? I'm not sure how we.
You're talking the, on the strength conditioning?
Well, yeah.
That, you know, I.
Was that separate from, I was thinking it was the 18?
The eight, yeah.
The 18 times this?
The $18, that, the $18 for athletic training services, that's.
Independent of the other?
That's independent of the other, yeah. And that's, that's a limit, a maximum of $600 of service for the athletic training. And then the, if you look at the strength conditioning, that piece is a flat fee of $18.50 per month, and that's the piece that's paid for through student fees and student participation in that program.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tim? Is there a motion to approve the athletic trainer contract?
Madam President, I'll make the motion to approve the athletic training contract with Larson Sports Medicine as presented.
Okay, motion by Mark?
Second.
Second by Tom. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the consent agenda items, is there someone that would like to make a motion, including the authorization for Tim for the expenditures?
Madam President, I'd like to move to approve the consent items, including the director of financial services being authorized to pay bills the amount of $3,338,155.28.
Motion by Brian, second by Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda items are approved. Committee reports. Brian, you are first on the list with the Finance Committee.
Thanks. Finance Committee meeting met on 27 September, covered the construction update that Tim covered. And then we had a, kind of our first look at the three-year financial update, and we got some challenges ahead of us. So we're going to have a lot of discussion on that is, when you look at three years and you look at all the work we've been doing over the last two years, we're not out of the woods yet, any, any stretch. In fact, it may get worse before it gets better. We look at, if the assumptions are we don't, we don't get any additional aid from the state or the federal, like last year, we got some federal dollars from, on the, to help us at the, kind of the end of the year, we have some big challenges ahead of us. And we're talking very, either very large tax increases, or we're going to have to find a way to, we're going to, we're going to have to really work through this, and it's going to be a big challenge for us. So I just think it's important to think that, you know, as we get some glimmers of hope in the economy, you know, that still hasn't, we still haven't benefited our tax rolls on that, and we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. And we're back to the drawing board in terms of getting through our budget next year. It's not going to be any easier than the last two years, it's probably going to be harder. So everything should be on the table, and we need to look through this thing, so.
Any questions for Brian in the Finance Committee work?
Brian, I actually have a question, and that is more generic about the three-year plan. So was there any discussion around?
So was there any discussion around bringing that to a broader board discussion as in a work session, as, or is that going to be a conversation that will continue to have in the Finance Committee only?
No, I think we're, oh, for sure, we're going to need a, that's a good point, I think we need a, you know, we're going to need a bigger, broad board input on this thing, maybe need to do a, we didn't cover that in the meeting, so I'm just kind of covering the meeting, but it may be a, maybe, what to talk about again, I think, in the Finance Committee, and maybe next, next meeting, we can have that as an agenda item.
Thank you. Next committee report, learning and program development. This committee met on September 27. We had four things on the agenda. You heard this evening the results of our advanced placement and ACT results. That was the first thing that we heard from Sandy and Stephanie. We also took a look at, I believe in the August board meeting, you saw the results of our WKCE test from last year. Annually, we've been looking as a committee at some disaggregated results, which has helped us better understand where we might have some gaps in the underlying data. We also met with two individual, three individuals from the Sustain Hudson Group, who are looking for ways to connect with the work that we're doing around HSD 2025. There's, I think Patty alluded to it a little bit earlier when she did the presentation on the Alaska trip, but there's, there's a desire on the part of Sustain Hudson to do even more of that. So I think Sandy is working with them to try and figure out where, and Ann Mitchell is also from the R3 group. All right, and finally, there was a joint presentation on the response to intervention work that's going on in the district with Corey, Sandy, Pig, and, oh, I think that's it, yeah. Any questions for learning and program development?
Just one comment as a follow-up from our meeting today, maybe it'd be a good topic, future topic, is to really, instead of just looking at the ACT scores every year and where we're at, and, you know, is it, is it indicating, is it better because of all the, of the work we're doing programmatically in the district? Can we provide a focused effort on ACT scores in our plan?
Okay, take it back to the committee first, Brian?
That'd be great.
And then bring it back to the board. All right, facilities and grounds, Lynn?
Thank you, Madam President. Facilities and grounds committee met on Monday, October 4. There were three items on our agenda. Tim covered the middle school addition in detail tonight. We also reviewed the capital project update and went through the projects that we had previously on the list and their status as far as completion. Some examples are the concrete work we've been doing across the district, roofing project at middle school in North Hudson, seal coating projects across the district, rock classroom, and the high school project with the domestic hot water, which you may recall, we had a four-year payback, so that project is completed. We also talked about the long-term space for learning that Mary covered briefly tonight, and asked that the administration to obtain a proposal to update the enrollment numbers and the projection, and the projections, so that when we are looking at secondary space, we have some accurate numbers to try to make some decisions with as we move forward. Any questions?
Any questions for Lynn? All right, and finally, personnel, Mark?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, the Personnel Committee met last, last Monday, October 4. We had a student enrollment and class size update by Nancy Sweet. We covered that, I think, pretty extensively earlier. Just, just two points I'm going to make with that. One was already stated, I think, perhaps more than once, but to emphasize the fact that we've got our largest kindergarten class ever. So just, you know, I, as has been stated, I think, you know, growth will continue, and I think that big kindergarten class is just sort of the bellwether of what's to come. And I do want to say too, that, I guess you want to compliment Nancy and her staff for doing a great job of monitoring these, these, these class sizes. It's, it's a challenging task that requires really constant attention, and we, we have achieved, on average, our, our class sizes are, are within our enrollment guidelines. Obviously, some, you know, are at the, the ends of the spectrum, but on average, we're maintaining our guidelines, and that's, that's commendable. We then did have a closed session dealing with some confidential employee issues and issues related to bargaining with our, our union group representing our ed assistants, media assistants, health assistants, and nutritional services employees. And in addition, I should note that that particular group has filed for mediation with the district, and I believe that that is going to be scheduled here in early November.
All right, thank you, Mark. Diane, I assume there are no citizens' requests to speak, and therefore, no board or administrator response. So with that, we will move into a closed session, we will not be returning. If someone would like to make the motion, including the specific language, on adjourning to a closed session?
Madam President, I move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.5, parent 1, parent F, for the purposes of preliminary consideration of a specific personnel problem, which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the employee involved.
Motion by Lynn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brian, and we'll roll call vote.
Robson, aye.
Bell, aye.
Holland, aye.
Van Loon, aye.
German, aye.
Kaiser-Schott, aye.
We are adjourned to closed session.